Good morning, Salem, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Salem Ward One Preliminary Candidates Forum. I am Dustin Luca with the Salem News, and to my right, starting from your left, are the candidates for Ward One. Just going in order, we have Cynthia Jerslow, Chris Malmstrom Jr., and Armand Blanchett Jr. We have a lot to cover in only an hour, so let's go over some rules. First, opening statements will be coming up first. They'll be given two minutes per candidate, and closing statements will also be one minute long at the conclusion. A nonpartisan question committee composed of Salem and League of Women Voters members prepared the final questions based on prior submissions from solicited Ward One voters. The committee grouped similar questions and edited them for length, clarity, and tone as necessary. The candidates will be given 90 seconds to answer each question, and they will be asked to respond to the questions in a random order so that no one always answers first, second, or last to a question. Additionally, if we don't get to everyone's questions because there is a lot to cover, we invite everybody to please reach out to the candidates directly. For each statement or answer, our timekeeper will be giving a card when the candidates have 30 seconds left in their time. Then she will hold up a card when the candidates must stop. To the candidates, you will each be given a question and the opportunity to answer about your approach or ideas. We ask that you not engage with one another and that you not respond to points raised by the candidates. There will be no rebuttals, so please speak about your own platform. To begin, the candidates will be giving their opening statements in the order they will appear on the primary ballot. Each candidate will have two minutes, and we will begin with Armand.
Thank you. My name is Armand Blanchett Jr., and I'm running for council of Ward One. My background is I moved here in 1973 at Dollar Street, and then in the mid-'70s, we moved to Witchcraft Heights, Gallows Hill. I graduated Salem Vocational High School and with a degree in electronics. My great-grandfather was fond of Saint Anne's Church and St. Joseph's Credit Union. My other grandfather helped the veterans and the disabled veterans for almost 40 years. I feel I'm a well-rounded candidate. I've spent 26 years in the hospitality business. Salem is a hospitality town. I did hiring, firing, training with all economic classes, all genders, all races. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have Cynthia Jerslow.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Cindy Jerslow, and I'm a lifelong resident of Salem and have lived in Ward One most of my life. My husband Ray and I are proud parents of two children who are graduates of Salem schools. My deep roots in Salem have grown into a sincere devotion and pride for my hometown. Five years ago, I retired from the Salem Police Department as a police officer. I have since continued my community involvement through service in various city groups. One of these groups is the Willow's Neighborhood Association that I helped found with a devoted group of neighbors. Since its creation four years ago, I have served as co-chair. In this role, I have had the opportunity to build relationship with many city officials. Though through creating effective lines of communication in these relationships, I have witnessed accountability greatly improve. Collaboration between us, community and city government, has inspired tangible progress that will continue to grow under my dedicated leadership. Thank you.
And last but not least, it's not often when you see a ballot go in alphabetical order. We have Chris Malmstrom Jr.
Hello, Salem, and hello to Salem's Ward One. I'm Chris Malmstrom. I am a over-decade-long resident of the historic Derby Street neighborhood. I am a hospitality professional, not as long as Armand, but about 15 or so years. I have been a member of the Historic Derby Street Neighborhood Association for the last five or so and have acted as their communications officer for the last year. Currently, the vice chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and previously was the chair of Salem's Democratic City Committee for about, from 2020 to the beginning of this year. I love this town. I love the city. I fell in love with it when I first moved here, deeply in love with it, and have grown more in love with it with each passing year that I've lived here. As that time has passed, I really decided I wanted to put in my effort and my focus to really helping, put in my contribution to helping make Salem the city, the best city that it can be. I've done that stepping up in various organizations in the city throughout the years, and now I want to do everything that I can to step up as Ward One's next city councillor to really be an active and engaged member and leader for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go into the questions. There's a ton going around in Ward One between everything that's happening at the Willow's, the offshore wind proposals, so the first question of many coming up. What are your top three priorities for the ward, and what are the specific actions the city should take to address them? We will be starting with Cindy.
Thank you. Being involved with the Willow's Neighborhood Association, we've gotten a lot accomplished in the last four years. The top priorities, I know I've been working with Safe-Salem Alliance for the environment. They started a committee for the offshore wind alliance, and we've been working together with them to create Community Benefits Act for the community with the Crowley Wind Turbine Marshaling Unit. We've been together, actually, we're meeting this Thursday with the mayor, a group of us stakeholders, and we're going to be discussing the Community Benefits Act that we can bring back to our community, walking around the neighborhood campaigning. I've asked a lot of the neighbors what their concerns are that live next to the marshaling terminal there, and a lot of it is the noise, the disruption of the neighborhood. I think we can work with the company Crowley, and we can actually help the neighbors there, different things going on. There's going to be a lot of traffic, noise, the pollution, and also the views of the property owners there. It's going to look a lot different. So that is one of the big topics. Also, the Shetland property, that's a big development going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Chris.
My first and foremost priority would be increased engagement with our ward. I want to make sure, I feel like the ward councillor's biggest responsibility is being an active and engaged participant in the neighborhood, being someone who's constantly walking through our streets, who is encountering any problems that might arise firsthand so they have a good, consistent knowledge of what issues our community members face from the day to day, whether it's issues of traffic signs and not proper signage, and the need for traffic calming measures through our neighborhood, particularly Derby Street Neighborhood that has a lot of people who like to speed through our narrow streets, whether it's the offshore wind marshalling yard and making sure that we have a councillor who is constantly engaged with the neighborhood to make sure that any issues arise from the construction creation of that yard to the continuing operation of that yard. We have someone who is really committed to investing in the community and making sure that he or her concerns. Beyond that, as Cindy mentioned, we have SOA, the Salem Offshore Wind Alliance, who is actively working to create a community benefits agreement for the offshore wind marshalling yard. It's imperative that we have a councillor who works with them and thoroughly advocates for what it is that they are proposing so that we have an agreement that works well with the city and with our community. Lastly, I think it's important that we have a councillor who will work with our Sustainability Department, particularly their Resilient Together project, so that we have active city engagement in how we can create a more resilient Salem against the effects of climate change. Our ward is particularly threatened by sea level rise and what will happen with climate change. It is imperative that we have a councillor who is aware of that and is working to fix it.
Thank you very much. And last on this one is Armand.
Thank you. One of the big issues is Shetland properties. I'm stating right now that it should stay as a business, not as the 1,400 condos they're proposing. That would shift the tax bracket even more now onto the homeowners. The wind project, there's actually three projects that are going on in the same neighborhood. You've got the wind, you might have Compton Amke, and you're going to have Fort Lee Terrace. All their traffic reports say it's going to go from Route 114 down Webb Street. Now, I attended a meeting where one of the two major issues for sustainability and flooding was Webb Street and Columbus. So with all the projects going down Webb Street, there's going to be major problems if that street floods. We need a council that's going to stand up for the residents to make sure that everything's taken care of for the infrastructure flooding. The city can't come up with a plan for the seawall down the Willow's that's been in the process for two and a half years. I believe that the holdup is $400,000 on one neighbor, so it's actually picking one neighbor versus another neighbor. We need a councillor that can go in there, straighten it out, and get the project done. They can't come up with $400,000, but they can give a tax break to wind turbine for $53.4 million.
Thank you very much. Question number two. As a councillor of a ward that borders the ocean and faces climate impacts, what measures to improve mitigation, resilience, and sustainability would you work toward to protect the residents of Ward One? And Chris, we'll begin with you on this one.
Well, kind of dovetailing off of my last point and my priorities, engaging with our city Sustainability and Resiliency Department. We were very fortunate that that department was created a couple of years ago, and we're even more fortunate, they're actively engaged in creating resiliency and sustainability projects for our city. They're currently focusing with the Resilient Together, the Point project, on the Point neighborhood, specifically focusing on Palmer Cove Park and what we might do to protect that area from sea level rise, whether it's creation of a new seawall, or a berm, or some other structure. I think it's really important that we have a councillor who's going to work with them not only to continue to further this project for the protection and safety of the Point neighborhood, which is particularly threatened by climate change, but also to kind of spearhead and really help propel those projects in neighborhoods such as Derby Street, the Willow's, Collins Cove, where we're all really seeing kind of scary flood maps that are coming in our way. Beyond that, I think it's really important that our city invest in some type of green public transit that we can utilize and help not only to reduce our traffic burden, but really help cut our city's carbon emissions. Traffic and the traffic emissions, probably about 43-ish percent of our city's carbon emissions to date. Whatever we can do to reduce that burden, reduce that contribution, will be very helpful.
All right. Next is Cindy.
Well, unfortunately, I was a victim of climate change in 2018. Our home was flooded with eight feet of water in the January 4th storm. We had to evacuate myself, my children, my elderly mother-in-law up the street to safety, and it took us six months to get back into our house. So I know firsthand what it's like to be displaced after a natural disaster like that. And that prompted our neighborhood to form the Salem Willow's Neighborhood Association. And also, within that association, we formed a Flood Advisory Seawall Committee. And for the last four years, we've been working with the city to rebuild our seawall on Columbus Avenue. We have hit a little bump in the road with the abutters. We're working with the city and the legal department for a betterment program. I have been working with Salem Sound Coastal Watch, and I've been to countless meetings with them, also walking through the neighborhoods and finding out the different projects that need to be done. Salem needs to be more prepared with these storms and the climate change that is coming our way. It's not just a local, it is a global effort, but within our city, we need to be more prepared. It's not just the Willow's neighborhood, it's the whole city. Thank you.
And last on this one, but not least, Armand.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah. As councillor of a ward that borders the ocean and faces climate impacts, what measures to improve mitigation, resilience, and sustainability would you work toward to protect residents of Ward One?
First thing I would do is stop building in the flood zones. The Fort Lee Terrace, they're going to make a 10-foot berm and then build 124 units. Well, that's fine and good, but the street's going to flood. There's nothing in their plans to mitigate that. Then I would shore up all the seawalls, Collins Cove, the Willow's, Palmer's Cove. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. As Ward One councillor, you'll be an ex-officio member of the Port Authority. What are the most important ideas to include in a community benefits agreement with the offshore wind marshalling port developers? How should neighborhood residents be involved in these negotiations with the developers? And Cindy, you're first on this one.
Thank you. I know the Crowley Wind Turbine Project, the terminal, they will be building a new port there that the city can use for cruise ships. And I think they need to get the community, especially the abutters, the neighbors in that neighborhood that are close to it, more involved, walking around campaigning. One of the questions I always ask are, what are your concerns in your neighborhood, especially the people that are very close to the terminal being built? And most of them seem okay about it. They're mostly, my sidewalk hasn't been fixed in years. So different, smaller projects, but I think the city needs to be more into the neighborhoods. They have to, more communication, open communication with the neighborhoods to get people to get their concerns met. If the last Community Benefits Act with the footprint, they were supposed to do the sidewalks on Fort Ave over. Well, if you look at it, the sidewalks have not been done. So I think the city needs to be more diligent, and when they do these Community Benefits Act, make sure they follow through with them. So if it's sidewalks that need to be done, they did do some on Webb Street, but the rest of Webb Street from Essex down to Bridge Street have not been done, and that's where all the traffic comes from, these projects, all the construction projects. So they need to be more aware of what the neighbors want, what they're asking for, what their concerns are. Thank you.
Next on this one is Armand.
I would push for more hubbers, because we're a tourist city, so that would produce more revenue. I would push for sidewalks being fixed, seawalls being fixed. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. And last on this one is Chris. Yeah, of course. As Ward One councillor, you'll be an ex-officio member of the Port Authority. What are the most important ideas to include in a community benefits agreement with the offshore wind marshalling port developers? And how should neighborhood residents be involved in these negotiations with the developers?
When we're talking about a community benefits agreement, I feel like first and foremost, we need to make sure that there is a neighborhood kind of oversight board that is set up, that is in charge of creating metrics that we can judge how well Crowley or any other organization that is involved in our port, because ideally, we'll have a CBA, not just for Crowley, but for any business that continues to engage in work with the offshore wind marshalling yard. I think it's really important that we have a neighborhood oversight board that can hold these companies to the community benefits agreement, that can alert the neighborhood if they're not fulfilling their end of the deal. Beyond that, I think it's really important in terms of aspects of the community benefits agreement, we really need to make sure that workforce development, particularly local workforce development, is a very strong part of that, that we're not just getting jobs that are shipped in from out of town, that, you know, with anything to help with potential traffic mitigation concerns, and just wanting to help stimulate our local economy, that what we're talking about is jobs training for people who live in Salem, particularly members of our environmental justice community, the Point neighborhood specifically, and then even communities such as Lynn that would really benefit from this type of workforce development. Beyond that, it's really important that we insist on Crowley investing in our city in resiliency measures, not just for their own property, but helping the city to pay for things that would help Salem itself with its resiliency, because our long-term future is tied to their long-term future, and it's important that they recognize that and are willing to contribute towards it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. These are all great answers so far. Let's now move on to Shetland. So this is going to start with Chris. What are your thoughts on the new plans for the Shetland property development? Do you have any thoughts on the size, the scope, and how the proposal will potentially affect the Point neighborhood?
I think when we're looking at Shetland Park, there's a lot of, there's a huge scope of opportunity that we can see from that development, but there's also kind of a very dangerous path that we walk, particularly with its location in the Point neighborhood, where we're worried, there's a genuine and legitimate concern about the potential for development here to gentrify that neighborhood and really push out what have been years-long residents of that neighborhood who have been kind of a very vital part of our community for decades now. So when we're talking about this, we really need to ask, when we're talking about Shetland Park, we really need to ask ourselves questions of, you know, what is the amount of units that we're putting in here? And of that amount of units, what is that ratio of market rate to affordable? Shetland has signaled that they are interested in pushing towards adding some affordability and some affordability matrix to what they're developing, but it's a matter of, okay, well, what units are you prioritizing? Are you building all of your market rate units first, and then going on to the affordable, and subsequently kind of just boosting up the average income for that neighborhood and basically gentrifying it? Or are we trying to make sure that there's an adequate mix of affordability in these units that are being created? When Shetland was at the Point Neighborhood Association a couple of weeks ago, giving their general plan, there was a question of, oh, we want these nice food businesses and things like that that are also going to go into Shetland. Well, where are those workers going to live? Are they going to be people who can live in Salem? Can they afford to live in Salem? Can they afford to live in these units that are being built? These are questions we really need to make sure that we're asking as this project continues.
Thank you very much. Next, Cindy.
Thank you. Recently, I attended the Point neighborhood that Chris mentioned, association meeting, and we were shown a rendering of the proposed Shetland development. They're asking to do 1,200 units with 2,700 parking space underneath the buildings. The neighbors were very concerned about the large footprint of the development in a very congested area. If anyone's ever driven down Congress Street in the afternoon when some workers are getting out or the school is letting out, it's bumper-to-bumper traffic. There's only one, a couple ways out is Congress Street, Palmer Street, yeah, Palmer Street and I believe Dow Street are the streets out. They're very congested, very narrow streets, and actually, the MBTA bus line actually stopped going down there. They just recently stopped the bus stop there because the buses cannot get down there. It is being built in a floodplain, and can our infrastructure handle this? A lot of these buildings are going up in these big developments, and nobody seems to be talking about the infrastructure, the sewage plant, the roadways, the traffic. We all know what it's like in Salem during Halloween time with the traffic. So I don't think anybody's talking about the infrastructure, and the buildings that they were proposing to build, some of them will be over eight stories high. So I think they really need to get a lot more of the community involved in this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last on this one is Armand.
Yes, I believe it's still zoned as a business, so they're going to have to get a city council approval to go to residential. I think they're missing on a perfect opportunity to bring businesses in that area instead of doing condos. I mean, everyone keeps talking about condos, but the site itself is three sides of water. I know, because I used to work there, some of the basements flood, so that means the underneath is also going to have to be shored up. There's, like Cindy said, there's only two or three ways to get in and out of there. So it's going to dump right on the Derby Street or dump out on Lafayette. Neither one of those can handle any more than what's already there. As far as infrastructure, that's the oldest part of the infrastructure in the city. So nobody's talking about that either. So I would stay the way it is and bring businesses in, not put condos there.
Thank you very much. Question number five starts to touch on the housing crisis. This is going to start with Cindy. Rising prices for both homeownership and rentals continue to be one of the biggest problems facing all of Salem residents. What policies or programs would you support to increase the supply of available housing here in Salem? If you do not support new housing production in Salem, what specific policies would you support to drive housing costs down for both existing and future Salem residents?
The housing in Salem, it's not just for, it's in one area, the housing crisis. It's all over Salem. I know friends that would like to move into certain neighborhoods that, you know, that have grown up in Salem, but they just can't afford it. It's all over Salem. I think talking to a lot of the landlords in Salem, walking around the different streets, they seem to, the city has a lot of fees on landlords, like two, three families, four families. They have to pay for the trash, and they say all these different fees and the high taxes that they have to bring onto their tenants, so they have to raise the rent. So the city keeps giving all these big corporations big tax breaks in Salem. Why aren't they trying to work with the landlords in the city to help lower their costs so they don't have to bring it onto their tenants? I think they could stop programs that way. I know there's a lot of Airbnbs within the different neighborhoods. I know my neighborhood alone, there's over eight Airbnbs. So I think the city needs to revamp that program, maybe put a moratorium on them. That takes away a lot of housing in Salem. I don't think the city actually thought that out. And I don't think they keep a diligent watch over these Airbnbs. They're popping up more and more throughout the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, you're up.
So I too kind of am astounded at how unaffordable Salem has become. When I moved here 10 years ago, I was really fortunate to find the place that I did. And I look at Salem now and see a city that I could not afford to move to if that was the case today. And I think a lot of the dream of homeownership that my generation was promised is not exactly what it's cracked up to be, where instead of thinking that I could maybe sell my condo now for maybe a single-family home in a similar community, I could hopefully, if I'm lucky, do an equal transfer from one similar condo to another. And that's still debatable. And we're talking about renters. It's really not even better a situation on their end, partially, probably worse. When it comes to housing in Salem, it's definitely not just a one part of Salem or even just a Salem thing. It's something we recognize is a nationwide problem that we're facing. But Salem can continue to do its part to work towards mitigating the housing crisis. Economists do agree that increasing production of market rate units does help to lessen the burden on already existing home prices. It's something that we should continue to do. It's something that we should continue to advocate for neighborhoods that are currently less dense, adding a bit more density, and seeing what zoning changes we can do to make that possible. But again, it's something that needs to be done intentionally and thoughtfully. It needs to have an idea for what affordability is and what the average incomes of people in Salem are, and whether or not we're building homes for people who live in Salem or this idea of people who are coming from out of Salem to move here.
Thank you very much. Armand.
What is affordability? That's where it comes down. If you look at the metrics, we're a hospitality city. That's minimum wage. You can't buy a house, rent, or anything anymore in Salem. I would put a moratorium in on no more new construction on big developments until we get some kind of inclusionary ordinance in. Right now, I believe it's 10%. It should be more, 30 or 40%. And if we keep going, there's going to be more traffic because people aren't going to be able to afford to live in Salem, but work for sale. That's it.
Thank you very much. Armand, you'll be first on this next question. Outdoor dining has become very popular. This should be the last year of emergency protocols for COVID for allowing dining. Sorry, let me repeat that. This should be the last year of emergency COVID protocols for allowing dining. What rules would you like to see implemented going forward in terms of size, cost, et cetera?
What I would propose is, people that are using the outdoor dining now was for COVID. COVID's going to stop, so that means that protocol should stop. All they're doing is they're rewriting an ordinance so they can have outside dining. I'm a vice president of the AOH in Salem, and we have outside dining, but we're not taking up city space. It's in our own parking lot. Some of these restaurants take up city streets, sidewalks. It should be, they should be charged per square foot of what they're using. If they want a bigger place, get a bigger place, but don't use city property. And that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Cindy.
I like the outdoor dining. I have used it and whatnot. There are a few things in our ward, though. They do, like Armand mentioned, they do take up a city street, especially Hawthorne Boulevard. There's one whole road taken up by one restaurant there. It's not on a sidewalk. It's actually in the street, which I think poses an emergency traffic situation there. If a fire truck had to get down Essex Street quickly from Hawthorne Boulevard, they actually can't take that right from Hawthorne Boulevard. They'd have to go towards the common, around the common. I think the city needs to do a better job with it. And also, for handicapped people walking around, it seems to be a lot of obstacles in the way. I think they can do a better job with it, and like Armand said, I think they need to, they've just doubled their square footage, and are they paying for it for taxes and fees? I think the city needs to look at that. I think the city needs to look at that. If I can't take over my sidewalk as part of my yard, I don't think business should be able to do it without have some type of fee or compensation to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Chris, you are number three on this one.
So I mean, it is true that when we have restaurants that are, that are taking up city space, they're taking up city space, and I believe it was reality when this first started in the beginning of COVID, there was a little bit of a, an obstacle course that was created in some of our sidewalks, a little bit for some people, as we had tables, there wasn't really a regulation of where the tables should go versus the sidewalk and where people should walk. I think the city has done a lot to kind of clean that up and make it more of a cohesive situation that we have going on with the restaurants that do utilize outdoor dining, and I'm excited to see that continue. I think people who dine in our city really appreciate it. I think it's something that really kind of livens our city and helps give a little bit extra charm to, to what we already have as a wonderful coastal city here. But that being said, we are giving, as the city, these businesses extra square footage that they didn't necessarily anticipate when they sign their lease with the properties that they're occupying. So there should be a permitting process, some type of fee that we do work towards to make sure that, you know, this isn't just, the city's giving something to these businesses, there's a little bit of equal exchange, that the city can maybe even use this as an income, a revenue generating situation where these businesses can, like I said, pay a yearly fee to be able to have outdoor dining, and then they get to benefit from outdoor dining, the city gets to benefit from outdoor dining, we get to benefit from people continuing to come and spend more of their, their hard-earned money in our restaurants. And I think that's really wonderful, and I'd love to see that continue.
Thank you very much. And we are cruising right along through the questions. We're making great time on this. Question number seven, this one begins with Cindy. What do you see as a significant area of inequity in Salem, and what are your plans to address this inequity?
Well, I think inequity, I believe we need to all be on the same playing field to create equity within the city. I think, I think we need to get more involved, the citizens of Salem, to find out what the barriers are that creates this inequity. And once we understand the barriers, then maybe we can work together, get, and I know in just our Ward One, we have three different neighborhood associations. We have the Willow's Neighborhood Association, the Historic Derby Street Neighborhood Association, and also the Point Neighborhood Association. But they're not really, they don't actually work together. It's a very diverse ward, but I think if we got those three neighborhood associations together, we can actually work together to help the inequities in, within the different wards. I think there's a lot of people, Lucy Cachado in the Point Neighborhood Association, the ladies in the Historic Derby Street Neighborhood Association, and also the Willow's. A lot of very dedicated people that I think if we could get them together, we could really work together. I think it's, when you work collaborative together, it's very strong, you can get a lot of projects done. We have a lot of devoted people in the city that I think want to help other people in other parts of the city, but we just need to actually, I talk with the NIAAC committee constantly. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, number two.
I'm really glad someone asked this question, because when I think about equity and inequity in our community, in our city, I think most specifically about our ward and the Point Neighborhood, and kind of how that has existed as this separate entity from the city of Salem for so long. And it's been, for the city, a constant struggle to really engage with the community and make sure that we're getting people interested and engaged with what it is that we're trying to do, whether it's general projects, things like Shetland Park or the Resilient Together Project, just making sure that the city is doing everything it can to reach out to that community. When we think about for this election, previous elections, what voter turnout is, precinct two, the Point Neighborhood is the neighborhood that has one of the lowest turnouts of our city, and I think that's indicative of that equity conversation and what the city is doing to really make it more equitable. Do we have a city councillor that is going in those neighborhoods on a consistent basis, forming relationships, not just with one or two people from that neighborhood, but from people from that neighborhood, from large groups of people from that neighborhood, so that when they're walking through that neighborhood, anyone on the street knows, hey, that's my councillor? I think it's so important that that engagement aspect is where the city prioritizes, because I think that that's where we have historically fallen short, particularly in us making sure that we have councillor to some extent who is capable, you know, of saying, you know, hablo un poquito de español, entiendo un poco más, pero estoy practicando esto as much as I can.
Thank you very much. Armand?
Yeah, there is a big difference in the ward. Just in the voter turnout in the last election, it was 34, 34% for Ward One, and Ward Two, I mean, our precinct two, it was 8%. I've spent a lot of time down the Point area, and it's very hard to get them engaged. I think part of the problem stems where we have a sitting councillor at large that's Domingo Dominguez, who's been trying to be council president for the last six years, and he keeps getting turned down. I think the Latinos have just had enough, and they don't feel like they're part of, they have a seat at the table anymore.
Thank you very much. We're on to question number eight, and this one will begin with Chris. Ward One has some very densely populated areas as well as some very popular parks and attractions. Residents have brought up litter as an issue, plus the desire for improved trash and recycling services. What ideas do you have for working on these quality-of-life issues?
I mean, that's a thing I hear a lot when knocking on doors. It's why I've, I've been a volunteer with Keep Salem Beautiful, which do neighborhood cleanups every month for years now, because it's a, it's a consistent problem, particularly in our ward. When we think about the Point Neighborhood, it's, it's one that frequently has a lot of trash. Even my Derby Street neighborhood, I'll walk down the street and find plenty of trash that I can pick up on any given day. I have heard from people visiting, from people who live in Salem as well, that they're shocked that we just don't have as many trash receptacles as you would think for a city that has so many tourists, not just in October, but throughout the year. I, I think, A, increasing, just generally increasing the amount of trash receptacles will be huge. Granted, that's not just an easy solution that we can do. We can't just say, we'll put more on the street. We have to actually have staff in our Department of Public Works who can keep on top of collecting that trash. But it's, it's a process that the city really needs to continue to actively invest and engage in, and not just continue with the approach that we seem to have of expecting everybody to just be on their best behavior and pick up after themselves. People do pay taxes to the city for a reason, and I think people should feel like the city is working actively itself to make sure that Salem is clean and not just relying on neighborhood groups that, that do it out of the goodness of their hearts.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Armand?
Yeah, part of the problem is we've got so many visitors and not enough trash barrels. I know the Willow's Association, Cindy can back me up on this, fought for years to have a trash receptacle put down at Fort Lee Park, and it just, it just got done this summer. Another thing is the Fort, the Fort Lee Park, where they're going to do Camp Numkeg, they should have incorporated that, because right now, it's just trees and people drive by and throw trash in the ground. We need enforcement.
Thank you very much. And last on this one is Cindy.
Thank you. Trash is one of my pet peeves. I hate litter box. Everybody knows that. Public spaces in Salem, I think they need to improve the maintenance and invest in repairs. About 15 years ago, a group of mothers in my neighborhood and I got together because our playground equipment was all damaged, and we went to the city, and they said we don't have any money for the playground. So we got together, a group of mothers, and we raised over $20,000, and we built new equipment with the neighbors. We got together, and, and that's how you can get things done with different groups. And down the Willow's, their new thing in Salem, and I think other areas, is if you take in trash, you take out trash. But there are hardly any barrels down the Willow's, just on the, where the restaurants are, but people walk away from the restaurants with their trash, and they tend to leave it around everywhere. The animals get to it. And our neighbors, we go down there, there's a couple that go down there every Tuesday night and pick up the trash on their own. But I think the city needs to do a better job at it, and they do need more trash receptacles. They can do the solar ones, you see in other areas, other cities, they could do more that way with the solar trash cans. The Park and Rec Department know me very well there. I'm constantly calling them on different things in the Willow's Neighborhood and the other parks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have about maybe 20 minutes left. We got two more questions and then closing statements. So question number nine begins with you, Armand. The city of Salem has proposed to move Pioneer Village to a site in the Willow's. What is your vision for Pioneer Village that will help improve its educational value, protect it from climate change, and mitigate effects on the neighborhood of this tourist attraction?
I'm against moving Pioneer Village for several reasons. One, they did a seawall, and the seawall is actually built lower than what the standards were. Number two, there's plenty of parking right now at Pioneer Village. Their estimates, this is the city's estimates, if they move Pioneer Village to Camp Numkeg, 28,000 visitors a year. I don't live there, Cindy lives there, she could tell you that there's no parking there. So where are all these cars going to go? That's basically it.
All right. Thank you very much. Chris?
So we look at Pioneer Village, we look at something that was built 100 years ago. It was not intended to be a permanent fixture, it was kind of just a celebratory, or I think it was 300-year anniversary, let's build something that's really cool and represents old Salem with their perspective of what old Salem looks like back 100 years ago. And the community liked it so much, they wanted to keep it, and they wanted to keep it around. And I, that's awesome. I think that's really great, but I think there is a reality that Pioneer Village was not built to last. Same with Camp Numkeg, not built necessarily to last. And I think the city does have a responsibility to upgrade these properties and make sure that they can work to last. If we're thinking about our 400th anniversary coming up in the next couple of years, I think it's 2026, I think we have a responsibility to create, to upgrade Pioneer Village, make it something that not only is more historically accurate than it was before, because we know a bit more about kind of our lens of history than we did 100 years ago, and can give something that's a little bit more historically accurate. But it should be something that we think, we want to make this built to last, not just for the next 100 years, but two, 300 years.
Thank you very much. And Cindy?
Thank you. The reason why I believe this all started was Mayor Driscoll, at the time, promised the YMCA, the land that the Pioneer Village now sits on, for the YMCA summer camp. So that's what started that they needed to move the Pioneer Village to Camp Numkeg. Recently, in a meeting with the Historic Commission, they, they gave us a, a rendering of what they wanted to do for Pioneer Village at Camp Numkeg site, and they wanted to create a million-dollar visitor center. And like Armin said, they were going to have 28,000 visitors, but they only allotted seven parking spaces for that site. And when I asked them, where are all the parking is going to go, they said that people could walk down to Bentley School during the summer and park there, which is practically a quarter of a mile away, and I don't see people doing that. I think they could take that million dollars and they could put it into other areas. The hangar down Winter Island needs to be redone, they could do that, and they could make it into somewhat of a visitor's center, a museum, and pot usage for the campground there. They have a historic Fort Pickering, and right down the street, they have historic Fort Lee, which needs to be redone. I've been trying for the last four years to get the city to clean up Fort Lee, and they need to take care of more of what they have already, the buildings they have, the parks they have, the land they have, rather than creating more stuff that they do not take care of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And question, the final question, question number 10, and Armand, this is going to begin with you. What additional steps should Salem take to support individuals and families in Salem who are unhoused?
Well, the state right now is a, is what I was told is a shelter state. So if you, if you come to this state, you get free shelter. So I think the city should be pushing the state for vouchers that would take care of a lot of the homeless. That's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you very much. Cindy?
Thank you. In Salem, we have the shelter, the Life Bridge Shelter, which is only for male and females. When we were displaced from the storm in 2018, my family and I, we called the state and asked them for help, thinking they could put us somewhere, and they said they could put us at the Life Bridge Shelter, but we couldn't bring our children or dogs. So I know firsthand, being a police officer, we've had families come into the police station at different times from out of state, and they needed to go to a shelter, and the shelter at Life Bridge does not take families. So we would set them up with the Salvation Army, which is, was a big help always. Right now, the South Campus, Salem State's South Campus, is housing immigrant families. I think this is a, is definitely a state problem, but I don't think Salem can handle all the housing crisis within the state. I think other communities need to step up. There's a lot of communities surrounding Salem that do not do their part, and I think Salem cannot handle the state's housing crisis alone. We need to have other communities step up and do their share. Thank you.
All right. And Chris?
When we think about Salem's unhoused population, I mean, housing is definitely a huge aspect of it, and I think what Salem doing anything that it can do to increase not just its supply of housing, but its supply of affordable housing, that people who are on the edge of being unhoused can afford to live in and afford to continue staying in, I think it's also really important that Salem pursues policies to kind of get a rein on how much rents can increase in a given year, considering that is what a lot of renters in our city are concerned about, whether or not their rents might raise three, four, five, $800 just in any given year, which is a sudden financial burden that could suddenly put someone in a state of being unhoused. Beyond that, our, our problem with unhoused population is there's also a significant mental health problem, and Salem needs to do whatever it can. I mean, I've been encouraged by, by what we've done with our police force and the Community Impact Unit, and the work that they have been doing to kind of take a nonviolent, non-confrontational approach with our unhoused population, and I'd like to see that expand. I'd like to see more mental health services that can be provided by Salem to these individuals, because really, that's kind of what is a huge part of, at the heart of it here, is, you know, we can put a roof over someone's head, but if they're suffering from a severe mental health crisis and aren't able to take care of themselves, it's only so long before they're back on the street again. And so we need to make sure that we're looking at this as a multifaceted issue with multifaceted approaches.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That actually exhausts our questions, so thank you to the candidates for your responses to the questions this morning. We will now move on to the closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement, and the statements will go in the order that they appear on the preliminary ballot. So alphabetical again, Armand.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, I want to thank SATV for having us here. Now it's up to the voters. You've got three candidates, three different platforms. I think I'm, I'm well-rounded with all my past experience. I, you need somebody that's going to fight with all the developers. You need a voice for all, all of the ward, and I think I can give that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cindy?
Thank you. Ward One is arguably Salem's most unique ward. We have a mix of residences, industry, tourism, and recreation. There's always a great deal of change and development transpiring. I believe that listening to the residents of Ward One will allow me to understand their concerns for the change being brought about in our community, designing and presenting platforms for residents to get involved or allow for the inevitable advancement of our community to be more effectively meet the needs of the people it serves. Each neighborhood in our ward adds something unique and special to Salem, which makes engaging equally with all of Ward One of the highest importance. By engaging with historians and experts and always our residents, we can make growth in our ward respectful of our past and suitable for our future. As your ward councillor, I'll be able to present a unified voice to ensure your benefit is a top priority in matters that involve the interests of the city as a whole. I look forward to the opportunities my campaign engagement will, campaign will offer, and I appreciate your support, and I respectfully ask for your vote on Tuesday, September 19th, in the primary election. Thank you.
And we will wrap up with Chris.
As I mentioned at the opening, I love Salem. I've loved Salem more and more every year that I've lived here, and I love our ward even more so. I have no intention of moving or leaving anytime soon, and as those years have grown, I've just grown in my desire to really contribute and, and really help give back to a city that I think has given so much to me. I'm running to be city councillor for our ward because I want to put that love so much to me. I'm running to be city councillor for our ward because I want to put that love back into our ward. I want to put the passion that I have. And if you talk to anybody who knows me, can hear that I can be pretty passionate. And I want to be passionate for our ward. I want to be a ward councillor that makes other wards jealous of the councillor that we have. That's the energy, devotion, and strength that I'm going to put in. I've been demonstrating my leadership here in the city for a few years now, and I think many people in my neighborhood in particular, and across the city, know that I can be counted on to stand up and lead when the times need a leader. And I think that time is now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your closing statements, and thank you honestly for running for office and putting forward your ideas and perspectives. It's an important time for the ward, needs a really strong leader, and I think that the, the voters have a lot to chew on. So I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters of Salem for planning this forum, and obviously SATV for broadcasting today and videotaping the forum. Thank you to the Point Neighborhood Association and the Historic Derby Street Neighborhood Association for submitting these questions, and for all of the residents of Ward One who also submitted questions today. The recording of this forum will be available on SATV's YouTube channel in English and Spanish over the next few days for people to watch on demand. Please, 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 I can't say enough, please vote in the Ward One preliminary election on Tuesday, September 19th, and then make sure, again, to vote in the main election on November 7th, when the top two will compete for seat number one on the council. Thank you very much for your time, and have a glorious day.